Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Um, we're going to get started today is October 19th. Welcome to the President's Council Meeting for this evening. Uh, we're meeting via Zoom as well as in town council chambers. Um, if you are watching on Town Hall screen, so would like to participate via Zoom, you can go on our website and our discussion agenda on how to go ahead and join the meeting if you'd like to make a comment. Um, first thing we'd like to do is do a pledge of allegiance. And since I am not there, if you might please, uh, lead in the pledge where we can care.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay. I will have a member in person. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is adoption of the minutes of the October fifth, 2021.
I move we discuss and go to both the minutes of the meeting for October fifth, 2021.
Second. Second.
I'm sorry, let me catch you second.
Yes, that's right.
Tim, okay, thank you, Tim. Next, Councilor, do you have any adjustments to do that need to make those minutes?
Yes, I do, Heather, on page 16 of 17. Um, I had asked some of the questions about some of the bills on the warrant. The town manager explained the bills. Uh, there were a number of items that were not answered at the last meeting or by this one, but I have made notes and I've given it to the town manager to be addressed for the next meeting.
So would you like that just to request that you had additional questions beyond what were answered at the meeting?
No, I had questions that were not answered, not additional. They were original at that last meeting, but they weren't answered at that meeting or between then and now.
So you still have remaining questions to be answered?
That is correct. And the notes I had on the paper, I just handed it to the town manager instead of going through them again and wasting another five, six, seven minutes.
I have those on my, um, large to-do list, yes.
They were items related to Kinnebec Valley Council of Government. Okay, be called.
Okay. So we'll make a note in the meeting that, um, regarding that, that you have a couple more questions that you put in writing to the town manager to be answered for the next meeting, correct?
That's correct, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I had a comment on, uh...
Are you kidding?
Jason, Councilor Hall has a question.
Says councillor's present by Zoom. Councillor's present by Zoom and I'm not listed as being present, so.
Oh, that's not good.
Just want to be clear, I was there.
We'll get you right on that.
Thanks. Thank you.
Anything else, Councilor? Okay, so we have two options for ending there. Um, and we'll just do a roll call vote with that as amended with Mike having remaining questions to be answered that he's divided and writing tonight for next meeting and also actually adding to as a participant to the last meeting. Um, all those in favor will go through a roll. Uh, Councilor, just a sec.
I vote aye.
Councilor Hallmark?
Aye.
Councilor Shaw?
Aye.
Councilor Hall?
Aye.
Can you still hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Councilor Lydonide?
Aye.
Thank you, sorry, skipped out with, um, Councilor Nicole?
Aye.
Okay, aye as well, so those are accepted as amended. Next item, presentations, congratulations, introductions. We have a presentation by recycling coordinator, Don Schute, who directs fee structures at the transfer station and recycling center.
So Donnie is here this evening, uh, in the audience, and this is just a brief review of the type of items that we have on the piece get full and anything you're thinking of for revisions.
Well, I'll be real quick, uh, won't take too much of your time tonight. Uh, I know that councillor Hall in the past, a few of them had asked in the past where we were as far as fee systems.
Donnie, could you speak up just a hair for us, please?
I certainly can. Sorry, Amanda, I'll stand up too, maybe that'll make it, I'll get high enough, resonate. Um, basically, we got, uh, we decided that last year and the year before, we needed to amend some of our fee systems and the first one that we decided that needed to get done was the transfer station stickers themselves, uh, considering that with a dollar, uh, transfer station sticker in the past, everybody could get rid of anything for no fee, uh, which...
Recording in progress.
Which was, uh, which was probably not the right thing to do. We upped the dump sticker fee to $20. I went from 10 to, last year to 20 this year. Um, we've sold over a thousand dump stickers, which is actually very well acclimated to it now. People are showing up with their dump stickers, they're figuring out that, uh, $20 a year to be able to get rid of their material at a facility is a pretty good deal. Um, we do have, uh, fee systems for bolster in place. It's $10 if he brings a recycling can in, uh, with half trash and half recycling, uh, which is promoting businesses in the town to recycle, so we don't want to really, uh, stick a big fee on that, which increased from $5 last year to $10 this year. And we also have got a $40 a ton, which is half of our tipping fee plus our trucking, uh, that it costs us to take it to landfill. And they are now taking all their compactor trucks to the landfill, so it's kind of saving on our aging compacters, uh, one of which is, uh, 31 years old and the other one is 25 years old and they need some help. So, uh, keeping, keeping those big trash trucks out of our facilities help. Um, the other fee systems that we've got, uh, something that we may want to look at as a new year, I think the ones that we have now are really good, they're fair. I don't think we need to see an increase, uh, with the way the economy's going and the way it looks like taxes and some other things may have to go up a little bit. Um, I think the fees that we've got there now are good. We do have a, a fee for, uh, four communities that use our recycling and we call them a user fee. Uh, the town of Detroit, Canaan, uh, Solon, uh, they, they come in and bring some of their recycling to us, which is neat and sorted. Uh, and Hartland also brings over to us, uh, their recycling as well, and they pay a user fee. Uh, contingent that what they bring us is good, clean, sorted material, so it doesn't cost us, uh, much labor when it gets to our facility for sorting, so it can be baled very readily. Uh, currently, uh, cost, it's costing us about $40 to $50 a ton to bail material. Um, so, uh, we're getting, uh, some revenue back this year. I will tell you, I was kind of excited last month. Uh, plastics went from spending $200 a ton to get rid of it. Uh, it would have been cheaper to throw in the trash at $70 a ton. Uh, I got $1,060 for a half a load of plastic. We got almost $10,000 out of a half a truck and trailer load of plastic. So recycling revenue is up, it looks good. Um, so we are, we are not losing money, we're actually making money off good, clean recycling. Uh, with those four communities pay a minimal user fee. Again, we want to, we want to keep them recycling. Uh, when I first started back in 1994, there was 93, 94, we had 18 communities that were using our facility, uh, at will, and, uh, they weren't really paying us anything, it was just, uh, whatever we got for recycling revenue. And, and again, that becomes problematic if recycling market turns the other way and it costs us money. Um, we've been very fortunate. Uh, one of the things that still makes our program thrive is the ability to, uh, get that good, clean recycling, get part of that process of that labor done by the people who drop it off, and secondly, is aggressively marketing. Uh, we have, there are a few, uh, organizations out there that sign on to marketing programs that give money per ton to market their materials. Uh, I'm still kind of freelancing, so I kind of look at it like the stock market, watch the trends up and down, and, uh, if we need to, we can hold stuff for a little while and wait for the markets to change, and then we can dump it on the market and eat it at a, at a good price. So, um, right now, $150, I think I got on the last load of cardboard. Uh, cardboard costs about $30 a ton to bail, and it's probably the cheapest, uh, and the least labor intensive of everything that we bail, so we get about $120 a ton profit off doing good, clean cardboard. Uh, one of the things that we need to look at is, uh, a lot of communities that jumped off out of our program as a regional effort, have decided to go single stream and do some, some other things, and now they're, they're paying more, more for their recycling to get rid of it than they are for their trash. Uh, so, uh, a lot of them have been calling to try and get back into our program. Uh, I think that's going to be problematic. Uh, a lot of these places are finding out that single stream is basically just mixing a little bit of recycling with the trash and, um, getting credit for the whole, the whole piece of that, that whole single stream is tons for recycling, where people are catching on, uh, use for example, um, Palmyra was one of them. Uh, they were a long time, they used to, to own the recycling truck, they used to be a regional partner. Uh, they went to single streaming and it went from them, uh, getting rid of it for nothing to cost them like $60 a ton using Pontytree to get rid of it. So, the problem that they're having is trying to get people to go back to sorting material, and it's not working very well for them. So, any incentive for us to take on some other communities that are, aren't sorting are probably not a good thing for us to do right now, uh, with the way, uh, the markets are trending. Uh, I do, I do know that, uh, Mike Bolster, he is, he's one of our biggest contributors, he likes to recycle. He has been bringing good, clean recycling from other communities, um, but he has not assessed the fee, and, uh, that's one of the sticking points that we have with private enterprises. Towns are paying a user fee, he's not, and he shows up, he could show up anytime during the week and show up with a, a big box truck full of cardboard and he wants to dump it right now, and if you tell him, well, it would have been nice to know ahead of time, he gets, he gets a little upset that, well, you're making money off it, but we are making money off it as long as we've got time to be able to fit those, those in, and we've been very forthcoming with him, so we take a lot of him. He brings a lot of stuff from Keratunk, the Forks, uh, he brings a lot of stuff from Unity, he's bringing cardboard from Pride and Unity, uh, Pride in Birmingham, he's bringing some stuff, he's, uh, he's bringing some other boxes, and generally, they're in decent shape, but there is still some sorting and some labor cost to it, so I think if we're going to go in the future to offer it to maybe some private enterprise, that we probably need to come up with some sort of, um, fee for them, whether it be a container, uh, like we do with the trash or, or something to that effect. But, uh, obviously, our sticker program's working well. Um, our tonages are down as far as solid waste, uh, demo debris is way down, uh, that's gone way downhill, which is really, really good. It's cost us on average about $65,000 a year to get rid of demo debris, we're down less than $30,000. So, the stickers are working, um, you've got guys up there, they're very conscientious, very helpful, uh, trying to keep the stuff where it belongs. And, uh, one of the things that people got to understand, they got to be patient, uh, when people try to get rid of stuff that are not doing it the right way, we've got three guys bailing cardboard because we've got six ton of cardboard on the floor, so it makes it tough to try to run around and to get all those areas. But I think we're very efficient, uh, as far as what we're doing right now, uh, and any downtime taking over the public works, I've got a few guys that will go out and help some of the public works guys on projects, so I'm trying to make the facility as efficient as possible, and I also want to make it financially responsible as well. And I think our user fees are a good place, I just think we need to look at maybe, uh, looking at a fee, a small fee for private enterprises, if they want to use our facility, again, as long as we're making a profit off the stuff, it isn't costing us anything, I think we're doing the right thing. So, any questions?
No, it's good, thank you.
No, very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
I know that he's...
Thank you, Darren.
I, I have my hand raised, I have a question.
Okay.
Um, I just wanted to check, Donnie, I had asked this last year when the program was new and we really didn't have a good answer for it then, um, except I knew I wasn't satisfied with the answer that the employees at the time at the town office were giving. Um, and it was, if we wanted more than one transfer sticker per household because we have multiple vehicles, like, for example, our truck is out and that's the vehicle that has the sticker on it, but could I buy two stickers at the same time and, um, only pay $30, let's say, instead of paying $40 to have each one? And we weren't sure where that was going to go at the time. Um, the answer I had been given at the town office was, oh, don't buy two, and I was willing to pay the 40 to buy two, I just put that out there. It was, instead of buying two, we were told to, well, just keep moving it between vehicles, which of course will hurt us with other potential, um, uses of those stickers for the people who do not live in the community. So I'm just curious if that had been given more thought, or it would be, if I want two for my household, it would be $20 each?
I, I actually, we had talked about that a while back, and we had talked about the same thing about someone who actually lost their sticker, because we have a sticker number 768 that we found on the ground at the transfer station, we still haven't found the owner for it. Um, for some reason, don't know why we, that number doesn't exist, but, um, one of the things we talked about is if somebody lost a sticker, could they come in and replace it and do that at half cost rather than buying a brand new dump sticker? And I thought that that was something that was fair, and I think as long as you want that second dump sticker, as long as you can prove residency, I think that should be, I think that should be assessed with, with that second sticker, you know? I don't think everybody, I have three vehicles, I'm not, I should not pay 20 for each myself, but I think if you want that second sticker, yeah, a half fee for that, as long as you can prove residency, I think that's, that's a good idea.
Thank you, Donnie.
You're welcome.
Catherine, if that were just to be the case, that we had some type of policy for multiple stickers like that, that would be something we would adopt, state for the town as a whole, to make sure that it would be consistent. Uh, and then how does that work in terms of keeping track of who's buying what stickers, when, and for how much in the front office?
Heather, my thought was if I was buying both stickers at the same time, not if like I went in in December and got it for the truck and then in June to get it for my car. It was more like if I went in in December and bought one both for the truck and my car, that I would then get a discount. That would be more what I was thinking and not a split payment kind of thing.
So we can...
Let me do that right there.
So we can track the stickers very easily at the town office, which we currently do in several modes, but if there's going to be a change to the fee schedule, it has to be done by the town council, part order, um, and this is the first time we've discussed that at a council meeting, at any type of break. So if that is something you're interested in, we can put it on the fee schedule for the future when we go through for other fees and do the fee review all at once.
Catherine, just, just as a reminder, this isn't the first time it was brought up at a council meeting, even Donnie remembered my question about this last year. So it's just that I'm re-bringing it up because we're talking about the fee schedule, and, um, if it's something that requires a lot of change, it's not something I'm worried about happening right away, it's just something I want on our radar to consider for households that have multiple vehicles.
So this is the first time there's been actual interest from a number of people for it. You had brought it up just as a question, which I appreciate, so we had decided to go through the process and see how things would work out, um, and they have worked out exceptionally well for the, for the transfer station stickers, so we can make some variations now, certainly.
Um, just a quick question, Donnie, um, if they were going to do the, because I mean, I've got a truck, so I'll just have one, but if somebody's got multiple vehicles, can that, I mean, and I guess it's a question for Catherine and Donnie, is that something they could do after the first of the year? Most people will, will, will come in after the first of the year and, you know, oh, it's true, it's 2022, I'm going to start doing, I mean, some don't, but a lot of people do. I don't know if that was something that they could do in early 2022, that would, I mean, is that doable, Catherine, or would that be too early?
All right, so the stickers will come out near the end of the year, and so the stickers would be available for 2022.
Correct.
In 2022.
Correct.
So if somebody wished to purchase two, that's fine, or three. Um, I think what's happened in the past to save money, um, it's been suggested that the transfer station and other places, the town office too, that they can put them on a placard and move them between their vehicles.
Yeah.
Because we do know whose vehicles are whose, and they're recorded at the office. But yes, somebody can, um, buy two, or they can, uh, we can have a discount. If we're going to have a discount, we need to pass it by the, the end of this year when we do all the fees and do everything together.
So that could take effect sometime early next year. So, I mean, most people after the first year, they go, whoops, I got to go do this, I know I'm guilty of that, so, okay, thank you.
So can we just put that as an action item for review of the, um, entire fee structure for the town, so we can make adjustments to all these fees at once, so we don't have this podge, podge, um, approach of changing the dump stickers or the transfer station stickers, one meeting and have to change other things in another meeting? Can we just go through and do a review of all of the fees for the town all at the same time, so that we can just do it once and be done with it?
Yes, we would do them all at once. We have some others that are on the list, um, awaiting this too, as well as the question, you know, on the transfer station stickers, and we've had some questions regarding landlords and other situations which Donnie's been working on.
So are you thinking we'll do that in December, before the end of the year, or do you want to do it before we, we'll start having stickers available to them in the beginning of December?
I think December is fine, first meeting in December.
Yeah.
Okay, so for the meeting towards the end of the year, I'll get time to sort out all the other, um, dump that are there then?
Yes, absolutely, that works for me.
Okay, great. Councilor, do you have any questions or feedback for Donnie?
Thank you, good job. There's reasons why they keep calling you when you're not calling them.
Hey, I'm not hearing anything else. Uh, um, thank you, Donnie, uh, I hope we appreciate your attention to detailed information.
Can I just...
Donnie has his hand up for one, one further question here.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, you're very tiny on my screen.
No, it's not, it's not actually a question, it's just, I think that, that's why we were saying about the fees, is I was actually looking at assessing a fee for those, uh, private businesses, but the other thing that we do is build partnerships, and just so you're aware, I'm actually, uh, meeting with Chris Billfield, the, the town manager in Hartland, uh, about, um, doing some MS, uh, running MSW to the landfill back and forth, making an agreement with the town to do that, and they also have a CBD landfill that's located, uh, 12 miles away and not 40 miles away, uh, that we could, uh, look at dumping our, our demo very close to home, saving on trucking, saving on that as well, so I'll be having a meeting Thursday with him, uh, to see what the possibility of saving some money with the CBD, and also, uh, when Mike has got time in between cans, we could be helping over another community, and they could be paying us a fee for it as well, so...
Don, what is MSW?
MSW is municipal solid waste, so it would be like the, the regular trash stuff that goes in the compactor. So they're looking at actually buying a compactor themselves, uh, they're taking two cans a week, and they're paying, uh, Wind Song Farms to haul it twice a week to landfill at quite an expense, um, about four and a half tons per load. They'll buy the compactor, they can put 14 or 15 ton in a can, so they could actually, we could do one load a week for them, or, or one load every other week and save them some money, so be a regional, regional asset.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, Donnie.
You're welcome.
Um, Catherine, are you ready to move on to economic and the community development activities?
Yes, I'll be very grateful, because we do have a long agenda this evening. The Main Street sidewalk project, uh, from our community development law firm is very important to us, so we have started working on that project now that the state main DOT has cemented their schedule and is going forward. We first want to indicate that the state has a presentation that can be seen at vpi/main DOT, um, I have that listed on the agenda, so you can click on that and go to their presentation. Presentation is approximately two hours long, from what I understand, and I'll be looking at it shortly, and it has some slides that MDOT has, uh, put on for the town of Pittsfield, which is wonderful. And the state remains on schedule. We have some very good news on the, uh, main DOT project, there will be a skinny coat that will be put down, hopefully this week. John Devon, our project engineer, has spoken to us a few times over the last few months, he has been trying to get money for the town, uh, money is scarce, as we know, on, on road projects, um, all around the state. So they have a, uh, small skinny coat that will be going on, that should take us for the next couple of years, um, until the project is in full stream, steam, so that will be really good. The rest of our grants are all going along very well, so I won't go through them because they're a long presentation on all the airport grants and the other, uh, grants that have taken place. Uh, but you want to make sure that you do, um, tune into the public involvement presentation. They sent out notices to all of the businesses and, uh, property owners along North Main Street and Main Street, so that would be very good. Uh, and so we will proceed forward here. Thank you so much.
Thank you, that's great news, Catherine.
It is.
Uh, next we have come up hearings, and there is none, uh, so under the report, we'll go to council committees, um, finance committee, having a meeting on 10/12. Amanda, are you able to report on that meeting?
I am. Uh, so, we were able to meet, um, as Heather said, on 10/12, that was last Tuesday, and it was our, we'll call it our final meeting before the big budget workshops coming up, um, the first of which is after the council meeting next week. Um, so public, please come and join us for those workshops, so you can hear the stuff that we're talking about and, um, we can understand your input and where your priorities lie as well. And that one, we're going over some of the smaller budgets. Catherine, do you have the list of all of them? I don't have it in front of me, that we're going over on the 25th.
We'll be going over all of the administrative items such as code enforcement, uh, finance, general assistance, um, library, all of the smaller budgets, the more, um, budgets that are generally about the same. Uh, the larger budgets and the budgets that will have changes will be at the workshops in which we do not have, have a council meeting, but this is the first big workshop in which we'll go over the overall budget in general and have an overview. Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we're busy, um, we have a meeting coming up, I don't believe we set at eight, we're going to check with, uh, councilors, um, I believe it was looking at the 26th, is that it?
Yes, we're doing good for the 26th.
About right. The 5:30, right?
5:30, yes.
5:30?
To 6:00, to 6:30. Then we have the big budget meeting.
Okay. Okay, and then re, my thing, can you guys have a meeting, is it tomorrow night?
Tomorrow night, 5:30. And we'll discuss what we want to do about main recyclables week at that meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Other board and maybe needs an update, Heather, do you have anything else on there?
No, thank you.
Okay, so we'll go wait for the town manager's report?
Yes, very good. Town manager's report, the councilors have a copy of the report copies are available on the table. And they'll be posted to the website. First item is notice to the Pittsfield Water Department customers hydrant flushing. Just if the hydrant flushing has not gotten to your area, you will know when it arrives. The water district started flushing the fire hydrants on October 4th. They will continue through the process until they are completed. They are moving in a directional way in order to ensure that they are flushing the system the best possible way and according to the engineers. You may experience intermittent pressure fluctuations and occasional yellow water or water of black particles. The yellow color in the water is due to the presence of iron. The black particles are due to the presence of magnesiums. When experiencing discolored water, do not use chlorine to bleach products with your laundry. You should flush your appliances. We have a letter from Oliver Associates, the town certified water operator for the Pittsfield Water Works on the town website, talks about the safety of the water supply to the customer, that the water that is supplied meets all the standards and has had all of its testing. And the more that we flush the system, even if we go beyond twice a year perhaps, we can get rid of some of this magnesium and the iron as much as possible. But this isn't our water and has been for a long time. Number two, upcoming state referendum. The state of Maine Secretary of State has a really nice setup and very user-friendly website to review the three questions which are on the referendum, the citizen initiative, the bond issue, and the constitutional amendment. So there's a lot of information that's available. We have that link on the town website for easy access. Absentee ballots have been available, and they've been zooming into the office. So make sure you get those back before or on November 2nd. And people can easily request an absentee ballot by accessing the state website. They can contact our town clerk at the town office. They can come in and pick up a ballot, they can take it home, they can fill it out here, they can have it mailed to them. So there's many ways for people who want to avoid the crowds or are just very busy and unable to get in. The town's absentee ballots are for three counselor, three-year terms, and two SAD 53 director, three-year term. Number three, tax bills are due on October 15th. So now we have interest accruing, unfortunately, something that we have to do under the law. So the taxes were due on October 15th at 5:00 PM. Anyone who was unable to pay their taxes by the due date, please call just to make sure that you get the correct amount of interest that will be placed on your check. And so plan also for the period of time it takes to mail, because it does take a bit longer. Again, the post office has been hit by COVID outbreaks throughout. Number four, the 2022 transfer station stickers will be available in December. So those will be available for purchase. Number five, 2022 dog licenses. All dogs over six months old must be registered prior to January 1st, 2022. The state law requires a late fee be assessed after that date. We do not want to charge a late fee, we're ordered by the state to do it. So please get in prior to January 31st. If you do not have a current rabies certificate, you would need that. So everybody's doggy jewelry is here for their dogs. Number six, online services for the re-registration of vehicles, boats, and other services. People can go to www.pittsfield.org, click on the citizens tab, choosing online services at the top of the page. Number seven, the 2022 capital improvement plan. The town councilors have that copy of the draft of the 10-year paving plan that we put together for the major rehabilitation reconstruction projects with estimates from the engineers and lists for replanning, grinding, and paving of the remainder of the roads. So these are all drafts, the roads that we're going to work on can be moved around. So basically, if anyone has any questions on anything, please let me know as soon as possible. Oliver Associates has been extra busy, as has the town. So we have worked this weekend on matching up water, sewer, and roads to funding sources, although frankly, there's not a lot of funding sources available. There are some for water and sewer, which is very good, it smokes the bones. And for roads, it just simply doesn't pay, which is too bad. But we will continue working on those. Number eight, work with compensation, safety incentive programs. The departments need to start working on their building plans and identifying any items that need to be budgeted for. Several people did, and those items are in the in the budget for next year for review. Number nine, department's meeting. We had a great department's meeting last Wednesday, October 13th. This meeting was by Zoom, worked very well. The staff involved learned about specific subjects of interest. We had a training session to learn about the new regulations that we need to follow. So there's always regulations. As I noted previously, we will not be meeting in person to assist in assuring that our municipal services will continue. Besides the sharing of information, different members of the staff volunteered to help other members on several project forms and how-to-do items, so that was very good. We received a lot of good information and tips regarding the terms and conditions that we need to follow for our services. Number 10, Deputy Mayor Nichols will be happy to hear that we've had a number of calls for the use of the reuse center to drop off things and set up appointments. So that was really good. So anyone that has items left over from their yard sales or cleaning out, moving in, or has just items that they would like to dispose of but not throw away, which we don't like, like to reuse as much as possible. We cannot take bedding or clothing, clothing can go to Pennywise. But other items can be dropped off for our reuse center by making an appointment with the town office to go to the transfer station to meet with our volunteer that's going to be running the facility once we finally can open. Number 11, as noted previously, it's main recycle week. And it looks like we'll be making some videos promoting recycling. So Deputy Mayor Nichols will be a movie star, sure enough.
I used to have a shirt that said, yes, I am a movie star. It doesn't fit me anymore.
Very quickly, on the Manson Park tennis courts for the 2021 hitting backboard campaign. They got a great donation from Bank of Savings Bank. So this is a project to help the youth to learn and practice on, as well as for new players. Tennis is making players come back here in Pittsfield. Number 14, for the municipal building renovations and art beautification. We are on schedule for October with one of the best little companies that we've worked with. We're awaiting notice of when they will arrive to do the work to the front of the municipal building. We've been on their list for two years now. It's hard to get on some of these contractors' lists, but this company does a great job, and their pricing is very well. So there's a number of projects they're going to be doing at the front of the building. Looking forward to that, we'll give as much notice as possible. People will have to use the back door, and we've told them they cannot arrive on election day. And skipping down quickly to computer services, we have a lot of computer items that are going to be looked at by our computer consultants, so they're arriving this week to work on a number of those items. And they also will be able to look at setting up the new corporate, such as a second vendor for credit cards from recreation, because this was all set up. But the gentleman that was coming got diagnosed with COVID the prior day before he was to arrive. So it's taken a few weeks, and now we're back on schedule here. Number 17, summer highway work. If anyone has any drainage or COVID issues, Don Schu at the transfer station, who's our own public works director, has been keeping a lengthy list so that we can put together a whole plan on drainage and COVID that can be taken care of, especially with the strange storms that we have now. Other water sewer projects, the only item we're going to mention under there, there's a lot of water sewer projects that we're waiting for can be done. We have received the cost to have Birchwood, Hamilton, Arbor, Henlock, Maple Terrace, as well as Library Street looked at for the video, also for the cleaning of the lines. We just received the cost for the cleaning of the lines. And due to the magnitude of the cost, this will be coming to a council meeting consideration to be certain of where anything that are could approve. And the last item that I'll mention is focus of the town manager's report. Please note that the town manager's reports need to take up a limited amount of time at a meeting, because we usually have many reports and agenda items. It's also good to try not to have long meetings, because we've had some of those. So if there's an item of interest or someone, if somebody does not know something or thinks something should have made the report, please drop that to town office or call. I can handle and work on upwards of 400 or 500 requests, and questions are more awake. I think 500 is more this week, because we're getting into, well, everything in this season's time of the year. The town manager's report can only list a few of these items, because I only take a couple hours to put these together. There's a host of items that are confidential, such as work with compensation cases or staff injuries that do to risk management procedures. We cannot mention those, but it doesn't mean that we do not prioritize those items as important. Literally hundreds of items come into the office each day. The staff and I pick up items we think people would be interested in that we are allowed to discuss on the law. So thank you very much. Try to keep it.
Thank you, Catherine. Next item will be the old business, and we do not have any, so we'll go on to new business and start off with Resolution 21-108.
Resolution 21-108. Resolve that the town council amend the meeting protocols to leave only the remote participation procedures in the record, effectively removing the vote that took place on April 20th, 2021.
I move we set Resolution 21-108 to discussion for vote.
I'll second it.
Was that deep?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Please, councilors, opening session on Resolution 21-108. This is a follow-up to our last meeting. And this effectively leaves us with just remote participation procedures in effect, removing any other which is on our meeting spread.
So this is in line with the discussion we had the last meeting about in-person meetings?
Yes, that vote is a legal vote according to the town attorney. So people were concerned it might be confusing, so this would dismiss it and remove it from the record. So you would just follow remote participation ordinance.
But I thought our actions did that anyway.
The actions that you took removed the list of items of protocol, but it didn't remove any of the particular items that were listed. So this will eliminate the number one that was on the protocol. There's different legal opinions, but we do follow the the town attorney's. And the town attorney has indicated that that's still in place. So some of the councils thought we should get rid of it, it'll just make it simpler.
If I may. Just to clarify for you, I asked for this item to be put on so that there was no more confusion about the codes and stuff like that, because there are differing opinions on whether or not that is still active. So by doing this, we're removing it, and then there's no more argument about it.
All right, thank you, Amanda.
You're welcome.
Any other requests, maybe some of the councilors? Anybody in the audience have questions about this item meeting?
I don't see anyone.
I'm not seeing anyone either. Councilor, go ahead and move the vote. Councilor Chinchet?
I vote aye.
Councilor Collmar?
Aye.
Councilor Frost?
Aye.
Councilor Hall?
Aye.
Councilor Ladsden?
Aye.
Councilor Nichols?
Nay.
I vote aye. All right, moving on to Resolution 21-109.
Resolution 21-109. Resolve that the town council approved the assignment of the Curtis Air Inc. lease for parcel E, which houses one of the hangers transferred from the Chimro Corporation on September 1st, 2019 to Curtis Air Inc. at the Pittsfield Municipal Airport as depicted on the official airport hangar map to hangar 2B7 LLC and authorize the town manager to execute the necessary paperwork.
I move we set Resolution 21-109 to discussion for vote.
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Second, councilor?
Second.
Tim, Tim, second it.
Thank you. Okay, councilor, do you have any questions about this item? This is a lease that's in effect now, and it's just being transferred to another, Amanda?
I just have one question, and I'm sure it's confidentiality reasons why the sum and fee was removed from our packet on what we can see. But I'm just curious, I'd like to make sure that the fee schedule that's being used is the updated fee schedule and it's not being released at the previous fee schedule, because I know that we had made some changes.
All right, I will check into that. The fee schedule that's being used is the fee schedule that was approved at the time that the leases were put into effect. So I would go back and check on that. Yes, I understand the question.
Yeah, I'm just concerned because it's a new lease, that we're not just renewing it at the same rate, even though we've made changes.
It would be an assignment, so we would have to continue with the pricing that was in effect, depending on the on the circumstances. So I will check into that further.
So if Amanda has questions that need to be answered, I'll lay the date. Can she, in all intensive purposes, vote on this? Would you feel comfortable voting on this, Amanda?
It's an assignment, which is allowable.
I'm not, it's not whether or not, Catherine, it's allowable. This was a really large discussion that we had had. All of my years are running in together now. I don't remember if it was in 2019 or 2020 or at the beginning of this year. But that really large discussion about the fees and wanting to increase that so the airport is able to sustain itself a little bit more. And of course, the best way for them to get that income is through these fees and things. So it's not really, my concern is not whether or not it's allowable. It's more that when are we going to start actually implementing the new fee schedule? If we have somebody who's taking over a hanger from somebody else?
Yeah, and if I may ask for clarification on page 36 of the entire project, we've got purchase price, number 2A, the sum of blank as a deposit. And it goes on, and the next one, 2B, the balance of blank shall be paid and sold. Why are those blank and empty? How, why do we not know what the numbers are on this?
So this is a purchase and sales that bring that between two parties. So it's not an item that we can require. This is a private sale between two parties on a building. The land is what would be leased, so that should be our concern.
So the sale of the property has to include the transfer of the lease of the land that the town owns?
They're transferring, the building has been transferred. So what is taking place now is that it's the lease where the land underneath the hanger would be assigned. So there's a lease agreement that's in effect now, and it allows an assignment.
So Catherine, just to clarify, the lease agreement right now is to Curtis Air, who owns the hanger, because Chimro sold them the hanger, is that correct?
They've indicated that the hanger was transferred on September 1st to Curtis Air. I'm not sure if it was sold or as part of an overall transfer that took place.
Well, at any rate, Chimro doesn't own it anymore, and Curtis Air does. But the lease is currently under Curtis Air for hanger E, the land underneath it.
Yes.
And we're looking to transfer that lease to somebody else, which is fine. I don't have an issue with that. But what I have an issue with is if we're transferring that lease, are we using the old fee schedule or the new fee schedule?
All right, so the easiest way to change the fees is for a vote of the town council to implement a new fee schedule. council to implement a new fee schedule for all of the leases that we have at the same time. So whether it's assigned or it's new or it's old, the leases would, the new fees would go into effect in 30 days. All of the lease agreements indicate that the new fee schedule, if there is a new fee schedule, goes into effect in 30 days. So I would think you'd want to do them all at once. And in discussion of the fee schedule, this is one of the items I thought we would discuss. When you do the overall fee schedule in December, you could also look at the airport fee schedule, which is something the airport committee is working on, and this could all go into effect from December 1 or 30 days after that, excuse me, January 1 or 30 days after that. You have to give them 30 days.
Just one more clarifying question then. So the airport committee did not already, I thought they had already issued their recommended fee schedule and they had already dealt with that.
No, they had not. We talked about the fact they were going to meet and work on that, which they did have a meeting and started working on it.
Okay, well, if we don't have a new fee schedule, then my question is kind of null and void, isn't it?
Well, it's a good question because this would all be part of the fee schedule in my mind. We would do everything at once, which includes the airport.
Oh, no, I agree with that, Catherine. It was just that I thought we had already dealt with that fee schedule and that was why I had asked the question. So I, my question is null and void until we deal with that.
You were just moving us along there.
Any other questions about this item, councilors? Anybody in the audience have any questions about this item?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes, we have a question from Ben Hall.
It's super reworded. Do all fee structures have to come to the council, including rep registration fees?
Yes.
Okay, that's important. We've been discussing that recently.
Yes, and so we're going to send the fee schedule out that we started the process now. We're going to send the fee schedule out, you know what your fees are, but we'll send the fee schedule out to all the departments and have them look over their fees to move toward seeing if we're going to have changes in the different departments. Oh, which one is yours?
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other questions regarding the lease? Does it sign it up this lease? I'm not seeing any. Is there anybody there in the room, Catherine?
No.
It's just so small I can't see on my screen.
I know, we're all timed. No, I don't see any hands up.
Okay, thank you. Councilors, we go ahead and move the vote on Resolution 21-109. Councilor Ching-Chet?
I vote nay.
Councilor Colmore?
Aye.
Councilor Frost?
Aye.
Councilor Hall?
Aye.
Councilor Ladday?
Aye.
Councilor Nichols?
Aye.
And I vote aye. That'll pass, six to one. Resolution 21-109.
Resolution 21-110. Resolve that the town council accept the proposal of Lane Casey Building Contractor Inc. of Augusta, Maine, in response to the request for bids dated March 2021 titled Construction Package 2, Construct Taxi Lane Apron and Tea Hangar, AIP Project Number 3-230036-0XX-2021, to not exceed $1,378,199.62 at the Pittsfield Municipal Airport, to be funded by several AIP Project Number 3-230036-20-2021 and the multi-year grant award for AIP Project Number 3-23-0036-021-2021, and authorize the town manager to execute a contract and all relevant paperwork for sale.
I move we set Resolution 21-110 to discussion for vote.
I'll second it.
Thank you, I have Mike and Pete.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, there's discussion on this? Councilors, do you have anything you need to add to this? And pretty straightforward, better bid. Is this the only bidder? I imagine there aren't a lot of companies that do this.
There were several bidders, but this was the little bidder checked out and recommended by Coyle Tanner Associates, the airport engineers, after a very large package was issued. I only provided you with the first sections up to the contract. I did think you wanted the rest of it. It's about the size.
Thank you for that. Councilors, do you have any questions about this project?
I just have one question, Heather, if I could. I just wanted to verify that the not to exceed amount is the amount that we were awarded by all of the different grants that this is and that's why that number is a little obscure?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, councilors? Any one in the audience have questions about this item? I don't see any electronic hands that are in hand in the audience, councilors.
There are none.
Councilors, move the vote on this item. Resolution 21-110. Councilor Ching-Chet?
I vote aye.
Councilor Colmore?
Aye.
Councilor Frost?
Aye.
Councilor Hall?
Aye.
Councilor Ladday?
Aye.
Councilor Nichols?
Aye.
Councilor Adora? That will pass unanimously. We will move on to 21-109.
Resolution 21-111. Resolve that the town council waives a bid policy, Chapter 2 Administrative Code, Section 106, Regulations of Bids and Contracts and Authorize the Town Manager to Transfer and Expend Up To $12,000 From Pitts Number 21 Airport Improvement Reserve, known as G1-611-000, for Crack Sailing at the Pittsfield Municipal Airport as established requesting qualifications.
I move we set Resolution 21-111 to discussion for vote.
I'll second it.
Is that you, Brent?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, councilors, any discussion on this item?
I just have one question just to clarify for those who don't know and to also verify my understanding. Because this is being taken from the reserve account, it's not impacting or affecting the tax rate, correct?
That would be correct, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilors, did the money get into the reserve, the awards on a yearly basis from the FAA or would this be certified through the budgeting process of the town?
It was previously set through the budget process by the town.
So it's tax money, it's not this year's tax money?
It's not affecting the taxes this year, that's correct.
Okay.
So a follow-up with that, Catherine, does that mean that we'll have to put more money in to fix the?
No, we would not.
Do the crack sealing later or?
No. We're very fortunate in that the amount of the grant match which we were told that we would have to have for the overall hangar and taxi lane project is so much lower than what was anticipated, that we have funds in the reserve account that actually can be utilized for crack sealing without making any impact or effect on the budget or the reserve or anything. So we're very, very fortunate.
Thank you.
Councilors, any other questions?
How low can you pull that reserve down? How low have you gone down with that before?
The reserve has had at some points, you know, just five or $10,000 in it. We have a larger amount in there now as listed on the agenda sheet simply because that was the amount we were told we needed for our match. And then we were so fortunate, we got $282,000 from the main DOT not anticipated. So our match is so much lower and may be lower still if another COVID grant is given to the town, so the match for part of the project is 0% rather than 5%.
So you're pulling the $12,000 from the 101, so you got roughly $90,000 left?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Could you just clarify what was said because I can't hear what Brent is saying?
Yes, Brent was asking how much the balance would be when this project was over with. We have $101,000 in the reserve account, the largest we've had for a long period of time. We have that because it was anticipated what our grant match would be, so we raised the money for that through the capital funding in the budget. And then our match is so much lower than this, so we have funds that are available for crack sealing. We're not able to use the grants that we have for crack sealing, but there may be a unique way that we can either refund money to the reserve later on or it's just would be considered it's a good project to do.
Okay, Amanda?
Yes, thank you. I just couldn't hear what the question that she was answering was.
Okay, no, that's the credit, let me see. Anyone in the electronic councilors? Anybody in the live audience that has a councilor meeting that have any questions?
I don't see any.
Okay, thank you. Moving to vote on Resolution 21-111. Councilor Ching-Chet?
I vote aye.
Councilor Colmore?
Aye.
Councilor Frost?
Aye.
Councilor Hall?
Aye.
Councilor Ladday?
Aye.
Councilor Nichols?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, Adora and Rob, that will pass unanimously. We'll go on to Resolution 21-112.
Resolution 21-112. Resolve that the town council authorize the town manager to execute the sale and installment agreement to complete the five-year pressure test for couplings in the fire station in an amount to not exceed $631.
I move we set Resolution 21-112 to discussion for vote.
Second.
Was that Jason?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and this falls under the bid amount, but because it's a sale and installation agreement, the council needs to prove it, is that correct, councilors?
That would be correct, yes.
And Bernard, if you're in the country with us, if you have anything you want to add to this, Bernard, before the councilor discussed?
This thing got weird, you know? You know, this is something, this is something new. It's been in NFA for seven years, but the state has never required it that until last year, so this is the first time we've caught in it. But it'll be ongoing from beginning on for every five years.
Okay, thank you. Councilors, do you have any questions for Bernard regarding this item?
I got a question. Just a moment.
I don't have a question necessarily for Bernard, but for Catherine, is this something we should make sure that we're holding money out for in our budget? I know it's right now minimal for an every-five-year fee, but you never know.
We can watch it. If it starts to grow beyond $631, that might be a good idea. We would just place an item in the budget for it and list it, but right now I think we're fine.
Okay, so this would fall like under contractual or?
Yes.
Maintenance or something along those lines?
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
It's part of the municipal building's budget, not mine.
Oh, so this doesn't belong to the fire department's budget, it belongs to the municipal building's budget?
Yes, ma'am. It has nothing.
Okay.
It's just that most of these large buildings in town, if you look at them, got this connection on the side and they have to be, like I say, now the state has decided that they need to be tested every five years.
Thank you for clarifying that, Bernard.
I got a question there. So this is not testing, this is not testing the sprinkler system itself in the building, it's testing the connection outside that connects to the sprinkler system. Is that my understanding?
That was my understanding because we have regular sprinkler tests that take place.
Okay, so it's just- It's testing the connection on the side of the building, the two-and-a-half-inch connection that feeds the sprinkler system. Should we have more head go off than the inlet on the system can handle? Okay. I can't imagine that would ever happen because, you know, we're going to go inside and try to put this fire out, not have the sprinklers do it if they haven't already done their job, but it's, again, it's one of those unfunded mandates from the state. Hey, Bernard, Mike and Ken here. How much would a new coupling cost? It doesn't make any difference, new coupling, you still got a test list between the coupling and where it goes into the system. Okay, so it's the connection, not the coupling? Well, yeah, it's the connection. They call it the coupling, but it's really the connection between that coupling and where it enters the sprinkler system, sprinkler valve system. Right, first valve in the system. Okay, so if that failed, we'd have to buy another coupling and regardless of whether it's new off the shelf, we'd have to test that too? Right, if you make any changes to it, they'd have to go back and retest it. Okay, so it's nothing that can be factory tested with a certification provided with it. It depends on where it's connected to, that's where the test is actually taking place, correct? Right, and at the same time, they test the backload preventer, which is required. Okay, all right, thank you, Bernard.
Any other questions, councilors? Anyone in the audience have any questions? I'm not seeing anything visiting with the council会议室, councilors.
No, I don't see any questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilors, move the question. Resolution 21-112. Councilor Ching-Chet?
I vote aye.
Councilor Colmore?
Aye.
Councilor Frost?
Aye.
Councilor Hall?
Aye.
Councilor Ladday?
Aye.
Councilor Nichols?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Thank you, Bernard, for chiming in on that. Next item is, it's a random number, next item is 21-113, councilors?
Yes, Resolution 21-113. Resolve that the town council authorize the town manager to execute the subscription agreement for the Pittsfield Fire Department with the Emergency Services Marketing Corporation for the I.A.R. Responding Calm Services, known as I.A.R., in the amount of $355 for a one-year subscription plus setup fees.
I move we set Resolution 21-113 to discussion for vote.
Second.
Was that true?
Yeah. Yes.
Yes, tell, we may.
Okay, Bernard, do you want to tell us about this item as well because this is actually, it's a fire department.
What this does is when we're paged now, the radio system, we have pagers. These pagers have gone up to now they're 400 bucks a piece. People live along their belts, you can imagine what happens to them. They get banged and trashed and as they get older, their light farn device maintenance becomes more costly on them. And then like a lot of stuff, all of a sudden the manufacturers stop making repair parts, so now you've got to go buy new ones. What we hope to do with this is in the not-too-distant future, as our pagers die, is not replace them. We will start now, we won't replace it more. But this- What this does, it takes the signal that we would normally hear on a pager and rebroadcasts it on people's telephone, cell phone. So we get a message that something's going to happen, and then we get, if we actually call, if they actually send out a signal and say, okay, you've got to go, we get this on our phone. So it takes away, there's maybe a 15-second delay in that from the time it goes off until we get it on our phone. But it takes out the dead spaces that we have in our radio system, which are not horrible at this point. We've got most of them fixed. But it does take out that cost of replacing and repairing the pagers.
So Bernard, a question if you would please. So if and when we pass this resolution, will you plan on immediately deleting the pagers?
We'll continue to use them until they break, and we won't repair them and we won't replace them.
Is that a cost? Is there a cost to that?
No, that's part of what the repair companies ask for. Our pagers we own, and they come in on our frequency from the company dispatch center.
I have a question then, Bernard. How many, is there a limit to how many phones that that'll go to? If you had to say like a firefighter has 100, 100 personnel, is there a limit?
No.
No.
The cost is based on how many calls you have.
Okay.
And we are over the limit for the cheap one, and we're, the one we've got, I believe is $300 a year. And that's the one because of the number of calls we have that we're going to be paying. That's still less than the price of one pager.
I have another question for you. Then, and this is where I previously worked, is where I ran into. If you end up calling somebody, have them on their own phone, then the company was liable to have to buy that person the phone. Are we going to run into some type of issue with that?
I can't hear the question.
If the firefighter is going to be called on a phone, right, instead of a pager?
Bernard?
Are we going to be responsible?
Bernard, the question?
Buy them a phone?
So the question is that if they're using somebody's phone at a previous place of employment, they have to purchase the phone for the person. So will we run into that, are we using just pagers, or pagers and phones?
I guess I'm a little confused. Most people have their own cell phone. If they leave their employment, and that's what they're using, and they get another phone, we just, we call the comm center, and they change the phone number in the system, and the person has to take their phone and go in and reload into a new phone. Say, since they go, say they've got Verizon, they go to AT&amp;T. If they go to AT&amp;T, they're going to have to load this system into their phone.
All the?
Which is not a hard job, even I can get through that.
All the firefighters are all volunteer, right?
Yes.
Okay, so then they would be voluntarily wanting to use their own phone to be called on?
Right, they'll use their own phone. It's just, it's basically, it's an app that you put on your phone and Cyberspace does the rest of it. Our computer at the station picks it up and then rebroadcasts it out. And you have that app on your phone and it receives it.
So there's no expectation that the town or the fire department will be providing the phone for the firemen, they or the firefighters, they would be providing it on the phone? I think that was a concern.
And we won't be locked?
That's the concept right now, and it is most places that are using this. And we're not dealing with a lot of places around that going with this.
And here's the subscription, so that's why coming to the council versus it requires an agreement to decide.
Yes, that's correct.
Right, it's been pretty good, my understanding is the Town Manager can't.
I have?
Well, he can, he just has to authorize her to do it.
I just have one question about it, and I'm just curious why we're only authorizing, make sure I'm reading this correctly, we're only authorizing a one-year subscription instead of authorizing like a three- or a five-year subscription if the plan is to continue with this, to lock in that fee so it doesn't go up? Because it's still the same annual fee that we could charge each month, I mean each year, but it's, why only do one-year subscriptions?
We can do a five-year contract, and we only have to pay a year.
Correct, yes, that's what it looks like in the subscription agreement. And I just feel like if we're going to do it, why not do it for five years and make sure we don't see an increase in cost? Because everything keeps increasing.
Well, you can.
I was trying to be nice, but sometimes that doesn't work.
You can do it.
Bernard, do you think this is going to be an ongoing thing? Or are you looking at this as like a trial year, and then if it works well over this year, and you have good response from it, then hop in and go into like a five-year?
That was my concept, was we try it for a year. It's like everything you're trying to do. There's some people that think it's the greatest thing, some sliced bread. There are others who really don't care for it because they don't want to listen to the, they don't like the sound that comes over their phone. But it either comes over your phone or it comes over a pager, and it's annoying. It needs a case if you really don't ready to go that day.
Guys, I was just looking at the, yeah, well, I was also looking at the one-time setup fee of $50, the telephone call costs of $5 a year, which I know that regardless of which agreement will be a yearly thing. But I'm thinking we save $50 if we set it up over time instead of having to set up, do that setup fee again when we do a new. I'm just, it really doesn't matter to me which way we go. I just, I am always concerned about watching the fees go up all the time.
The fees for this haven't increased in the last five years, so.
That's very good to know, thank you.
And the setup fee should not be, it's just a phone fee because we're all set up now, the computers are all set. I believe that's only going to be a one-time fee when they initially have set it up on our computer.
So that's just for like a new account fee, it wouldn't be a year as we knew. It's a little bit different, Counselor. Any other questions from Counselors regarding this item?
I'm okay with trying it for a year and see how it works before we jump in, either way.
Sorry, go ahead.
I said I'm okay with trying it out for a year just to see how it's going to be, and then after that, jumping in, either way, I'm okay with it.
I did not accept that, Catherine.
I just said I'm okay with doing it for one year and try to set it up and see how it works. I'm okay with that.
The Deputy Mayor has indicated that he's all set with the trial period, try it for one year and see how it works.
Okay. Anyone in the audience have any questions regarding this item?
Don Schut has his hand up.
Go ahead, Don.
I'll just clarify some of the questions, like, I don't know if Bernard can't hear you well enough, but I'm chief in Detroit, and I get a five-year deal for $1,500. Basically, this does transmit over your phone. And one of the benefits of it is, is in order for them to accept it on your phone, as part of that application, it says that you cannot backcharge either I Am Responding or your employer that uses the system to page you with that through your phone. So there is, there is no anticipation on the law. The other thing?
Tony, can you speak up a hair, please?
Yeah, and the other thing that it does is it also, it has a lot of benefits to it. You've got a computer monitor downstairs, it tells me exactly, they can hit a button on their phone, I know who's coming to the fire. So I can know right away when I come in the fire station, if I have to call mutual aid. It's got a mapping program in it, that you can put all your fire hydrants in. You can find every address, that if you don't know where you're going in another community, or if somebody doesn't know who's using this app, comes into this community, can find it without asking 4,000 questions. You can send messages and emails through the guys, contact information through that system. So it's got a lot of benefits. And I did it for the same thing. I lost five pages in one year. It cost me almost $2,000. And I had three or four that got dropped, which wasn't, you know, on purpose, it was accidental. And I spent another $600 or $700. And for $300 a year, I'm doing away with my pages. Everybody carries their own cell phone. If they accept that service, that's fine. If they don't, they will use the pages as long as we can until they're dead, and then we'll have to go back to hitting the old air horn or something, I guess. But it's a good system, it seems to work so far. I don't know how Bernard feels, but I think he likes it too. It does give us a lot of information, not just that tone.
Thank you, that clarified my question.
Yeah, so how long have you guys been using?
Thanks, Tony.
We've been using it, we did it last year. We actually, Detroit got it, we did a six-month trial for free, and we had no issues with it. We tried to convince the county, some said county to do it as a whole, but they didn't want to pay for all 26 fire departments. Penobscot, Waldo, and Saginaw, all county wide dispatch centers are using that application now. So we're going to, we're going to keep advocating, not you, Bernard, we're going to make the county pay for it eventually.
One of the things that has started already on this is that the water department is starting to plug in the locations of their hydrants on it. So if we get a call there, we can punch in and see, okay, where is the closest hydrant?
That sounds good. All right.
It probably has a lot of functionality for you. And are you even questions on it, and are we ready to go with our items? I have a bit of information about it.
Yes, we've learned a lot. I don't see any questions from the audience. Oh, she has a question.
To Amanda's point, then, if it sounds like it's a good system, then why not just go for the five-year subscription?
I think Bernard wanted to try it out.
I have no objection with that. If you want to go for five years, because we can get out of it, I believe. I don't think we're locked in if we say five years, then we can get out. But I don't see it, the only problem I see is that if everybody decides to get rid of their cell phone, which I don't see happening.
How many pagers do you have in all, and how many pagers do you lose in a year, Bernard? How long would it take to?
When's my expire going to be? When's my expire going to be? There was a light-farmed piece of equipment. Sometimes we don't, we repair one, and then it seems so, the next time they turn around, there's six of them broke. Right now, we have probably, I'm thinking in the vicinity of 18 to 20 good pagers. We've lost a couple this year that we haven't bothered to get repaired because we have enough to cover everybody, and because we were looking at trying this system.
Okay.
The firefighter said I, I'm sorry, Heather.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, the firefighters that I know who utilize the system and other departments really like it. And I don't see it being something that'll go away, like Bernard said, unless everybody gets rid of their cell phones. But that's never going to happen.
Well, we don't.
That's right.
Can we amend this evening for the five-year subscription? It would still be $355 a year, you said that doesn't change, Bernard?
No. Oops.
I just have a comment.
Is that correct?
That's the same, we just don't pay any, you pay the $1,000 and the $5, and there's no setup fee.
Okay. All right, so how do we structure this, Catherine? Do we just need to queue, reading a five-year subscription, whatever setup fees there are, at $355 per year?
You could just amend the motion easily.
Yeah, I was going to say, I.
Anyone like to amend the motion?
I have a quick comment, if you don't mind. I don't have a problem with doing five years if Bernard's comfortable with it, and he doesn't figure we're locked in, like Don, he gave us an update on that. If you guys want to go with five years, I don't have a problem with that either. As long as Bernard's comfortable with it, I'm fine.
I would say we'll just leave it up to the chief.
Yeah.
If he wants to bring it up again next year, that's his choice. Let's go for a year, let's just move on.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the order, resolution, I mean. And to amend it to say, keep everything that's there except at the end in the amount of $355 per year for a five-year subscription plus setup fee.
I'm good with that.
Well, if you're going to do a five-year thing, why don't you just do the $1,500 all at once? Save yourself $275. Then you're locked in. But you can cancel at any point. Yeah, so I don't know what the problem there is. Pay $1,500 up front.
If I, if I may make a comment here, we have a $355 item we've already spent 25 minutes on. Let's leave it up to the chief to determine what he wants to do, one, two, three, five years. It's $355, let's vote on it, move along, we have a lot more to do.
I believe my.
Say it.
I lost my earphone, I lost my audio for a minute. Amanda, you have a motion on the floor for five years?
Yes, because it did seem that Bernard was okay with that. He was just trying to not lock us in too long. So if Bernard's okay with a five-year, why not just take care of it now? So did you clear the amendment, Heather, or do you need me to repeat that?
I heard the five-year part, and then my earphones shut off on me.
Okay, so I was just saying to have the end say in the amount of $355 a year for a five-year subscription plus setup fees, instead of one year.
Anybody like to second that amendment?
I'll second it.
Was that he?
Jennifer Nichols. Deputy Mayor Nichols.
Okay, Nichols, okay, thank you. All right, Counselors, we have an amendment on the floor to amend the item to $355 a year subscription for five years including the setup fees. All those in favor of amending Resolution 21-113, please say aye. I'm sorry, we have to do a fire roll call. Counselor Chin Chen?
Nay.
Was that aye?
I vote nay, yes, correct.
Okay, Counselor Holmer?
Aye.
Frost?
Nay.
Counselor Hall?
Aye.
Counselor Laddice?
Aye.
Counselor Nichols?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye as well, that will pass the amended 21-113. Will be amended to be $355 a year for five-year subscription and setup fee. Do we need to have more discussion on this, or would you like to move to vote on the amended item? I'm not seeing any more hands. Is there anybody in the council room that would like to speak to this?
I don't see anyone.
What is it? We will vote on the amended item. Counselor Chin Chen, we're voting on amended item 21-113, how say you?
I vote nay.
Counselor Holmer?
Aye.
Counselor Frost?
Aye.
Counselor Hall?
Aye.
Counselor Laddice?
Aye.
Counselor Nichols?
Aye.
And I vote aye, though, pass six to one. Thank you Chief for calling in so many times, letting us know about us. Thank you, Don, for your infinite love. Counselors, we'll move on to Resolution 21-114.
Resolution 21-114. Resolve that the Town Council authorized the Town Manager to execute the listing agreement with Allied Realty of Scott Hegan for the Pittsfield communities there. for the Pittsfield community there to continue the relationship with the brokers Heather Blodgett and Aaron Bolster.
I move we set Resolution 21-114 to discussion for vote.
I'll second it.
I'm sorry, was that Pete?
Yes, yes.
Ah, good guess, okay. We have first and a second, councilors, discussion on this item?
Yes, I have a question. Have we shopped around for rates or what they would charge? I mean, I would do it only for a relationship with Heather Blodgett and Aaron Bolster?
We had previously, through the Pittsfield Economic Expansion Corporation, put out a request for proposals with the town. Interviews took place, there were a number of realtors that were interested. The price was the same for all of them, so they chose Allied Realty.
They chose?
Pittsfield Economic Expansion Corporation chose and then recommended to the town council.
Do we have the proposals available for review? Or we're just going on the suggestion of Pete?
The-
This is a renewal of the contract.
Yeah, the proposals were previously reviewed a year ago by the Pittsfield Economic Expansion Corporation, and then the proposals were given to the town council. So at this point, there's been no cost to the town because there's been no sale. Hence the renewal.
That happened last year, Michael, you wasn't on.
So this is renewal, why wouldn't it say renewal in the resolution then? That's a bit confusing. I mean, if I didn't understand it, I'm not gonna be the only one. If I am, shame on me. So this is a renewal of an existing contract?
Yes.
Great.
That makes it different, thank you for the clarification.
Any other questions, councilors?
Yeah, I have a question, Heather. With all the, looking at all the repairs that are needed for that building, on that last page there, page 153, with all those repairs that are needed in the, that's not a large building, is that price, how'd we come up with $175,000?
From review of other sales that had taken place in the marketplace at that time, plus they did have the information on the repairs that were necessary, and looking at the strategic location in the downtown. Obviously, most real estate agents would start higher, I assume it would go lower.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. I was thinking on $25,000, looking at all the repairs that building needs. Is this correct, my comment?
It does need a lot of repairs.
Yeah. So I'll say, thank you.
It's very, I just put this out there, it's very possible that when somebody does bid on it, they give us a little vol.
Yeah.
And that doesn't mean we don't, you know, I'm sure that they would recommend that we take it, if they want to sell it.
Catherine, I had brought this up when we were initially doing this too. I'm just curious why we didn't reconsider the sell price since it hasn't sold in the last year?
We can do that, but they had suggested we keep the same price.
I'm just curious, the longer that it's, it's, what did Pete Bigu call it? The longer that it was, well, shut down, we'll say, because I can't remember the phrase that he used. The more it deteriorate as it's not being used. And I don't want that to be the reason that it doesn't sell.
I suspect, let's say somebody goes in and looks at it, and those are quite a few people that have companies, when they go in and look at the amount of work that needs to be done, I don't think that the price would deter them. They're going to make their offer, which I assume will probably be quite interesting to us, because it'd be quite low.
Have we had any offers?
We've had verbal offers, but they haven't followed through. There's been a number of parties and companies that have gone in and looked at it. It's been listed out in San Francisco through the different movie studios that we know. And all of a sudden, people get interested, excited, but I think that they, you know, put together disclosures, and the disclosures make it clear as to the work that needs to be done.
So what we could do is we could ask the listing agent and maybe Gary as a representative of Pete to give us like a status report, since it has been a year since the listing has gone. Maybe at our next meeting, or two meetings from now, that we can kind of go through and assess that. I don't know that, I mean, we're not gonna change any of that information tonight. So if we could have that type of conversation at that time after we get more information from the listing agent, and maybe from Gary as far as what the real estate looks like right now, and whether you should be looking at changing that price. A lot of things have changed in the last year, obviously. But tonight, we can just decide whether or not we're gonna renew with this listing agent, that would be great.
I think the company would be more than willing to look at the price again. They've been very good to work with, and asked a lot of good questions, and good suggestions on places to advertise. Gary had wanted to be here this evening, but was unable to do so. He will do a report for us, we had talked about that.
That'd be great. Okay. Anyone in the audience have questions, or councilors, or any more questions about this item?
I don't see any questions. No.
Okay, thank you. All right, councilors, let's move to vote on Resolution 21-114. Counselor Chin Chen?
I vote aye.
Counselor Colmore?
Aye.
Counselor Frost?
Aye.
Counselor Hall?
Aye.
Counselor Longdais?
Aye.
Counselor Nichols?
Aye.
And I vote aye, well, that will pass unanimously. We move on to Resolution 21-115.
Resolution 21-115. Resolvent, the town council authorized the town manager to execute the Bar Harbor Bank and Trust Cash Management Services Master Agreement in Tral Network Deposits DDA-MMDA Deposit Placement Agreement and Insured Cash Sweep for ICS Services.
I move we set Resolution 21-115 to discussion for a vote.
Second. Second.
Was that Pete?
Yes.
Yes, it was, Stephanie Meyer Nichols.
Thank you. All right, and Catherine, this is to update the agreement because it was, was it People's Bank that the agreement was with? And when they got bought up by Bar Harbor, this is just updating that tax agreement?
It would be updating the agreement to the new owner. The other agreement, of course, went over to their successor. But the real reason why this came up is that the bank no longer wants to use the deposit bonds. They want to use the ICS services, and we have that with some of our other banking institutions, and it works very well.
Any questions, councilors?
Just one, will this cost us any more with them, Catherine, or is it just about changing the services they're using?
It's changing the services, no, it won't change any fees or anything, or add any fees.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions in the lobby?
I don't see any questions.
I don't see any either, so we'll move to vote. Councilors, Resolution 21-115, Counselor Chin Chen?
I vote aye.
Counselor Colmore?
Aye.
Counselor Frost?
Aye.
Counselor Hall?
Aye.
Counselor Longdais?
Aye.
Counselor Nichols?
Aye.
And I vote aye, that will pass unanimously. We move on to Resolution 21-116.
Yes, Resolution 21-116. Resolvent, the town council waived the bid policy, Chapter 2, Administrative Code, Section 106, Regulations of Bids and Contracts, and authorized the town manager and all of our associates to expend $8,750 for Hockes Paving Apartment, for trench paving, for water main pavement repairs on Dodson Street and Berchwood Terrace, in accordance with the proposal dated September 28, 2021, and received October 7, 2021.
I move we set Resolution 21-116 to discussion for vote.
I'll second.
Any questions, councilors? Fixing the pavement where the water mains were returned.
No, the only reason why it's here is that it's over the cap that I can authorize.
Catherine, this comes out of the water budget?
That would be correct, yes.
Any questions from the audience?
I don't see any.
I don't see, thank you. Councilors, we'll go ahead and vote on 21-116. Counselor Chin Chen?
I vote aye.
Counselor Colmore?
Aye.
Counselor Frost?
Aye.
Counselor Hall?
Aye.
Counselor Longdais?
Aye.
Counselor Nichols?
Aye.
Counsel, I vote aye, so that will pass unanimously. Resolution 21-117?
Resolution 21-117. Resolvent, the town council authorized the town manager to apply for and award, except the grant from the Federal Aviation Administration, FAA, in the amount of $32,000 under the Coronavirus Grant Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act, CRRSA, to the Airport Rescue Grant Program, ACRGP, and upon award to execute all paperwork on behalf of the town of Pittsfield, and authorize the expenditure of those funds for sale.
I move we set Resolution 21-117 to discussion for a vote.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions about this? Catherine, do you have any extra information on this?
Yes, very quickly, this is one of the several coronavirus, or COVID grants that we are eligible for. For this particular one, we could not use the money for crash dealing, which is why we use the reserve fund. But $32,000 is available to us for the next couple of years, in which we can get reimbursed in this year, and actually use the money as our down next year for operation costs at the airport. So these would be items such as your telephone bill, your snow plowing, the purchase of diesel, items such as this. So that will help with that.
Councilors, do you have any questions for Catherine about this item?
I just want to verify one, in Catherine, because this is under the ARPA funds, there's no match required, correct?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nothing, any other councilor questions? Anyone in the audience have any questions about this item?
I don't see any questions.
Not seeing any online. We'll move to vote. Councilors, we're voting on Resolution 21-117, Counselor Chin Chen?
I vote aye.
Counselor Colmore?
Aye.
Counselor Frost?
Aye.
Counselor Hall?
Aye.
Counselor Longdais?
Aye.
Counselor Nichols?
Aye.
And I vote aye, that will pass unanimously. Resolution 21-118?
Resolution 21-118. Resolvent, the town council approved the opening of absentee ballots on November 2, 2021, at 9:00 a.m., 11:00 a.m., 1:00 p.m., 3:00 p.m., and 6:00 p.m. for the November 2, 2021 state referendum election and municipal election.
I move we set Resolution 21-118 to discussion for vote.
Second.
Thank you. This is a housekeeping item, councilors, do you have any questions? Anyone in the audience have any questions?
I don't see any.
I do not either. All right, we'll move to vote. Resolution 21-118 regarding absentee ballots. Counselor Chin Chen?
I vote aye.
Counselor Colmore?
Aye.
Counselor Frost?
Aye.
Counselor Hall?
Aye.
Counselor Longdais?
Aye.
Counselor Nichols?
Aye.
And I vote aye, that will pass unanimously. Resolution 21-119?
Resolution 21-119. Resolvent, the town council appoint Nicole Nicklin as warden, and Tina Ferrius and Claire Jerry as the deputy wardens for the November 2, 2021 state referendum election and municipal election.
I move we set Resolution 21-119 to discussion for a vote.
Second.
Ben Jason?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, another housekeeping item regarding preparing for the election. Any questions, councilors?
So one quick question, and it's more a matter of curiosity than anything about whether or not I agree with this. It's just, I know that we have new employees in the town office now, and I'm curious what the training entails for the deputy wardens.
Yes, a very good question, for both deputy wardens and for deputy registrar as well, and deputy clerk. The town clerk gets instruction, Wednesday is a day for instructions. On this Wednesday, we have two different trainings that are not related to this. But the town clerk has a very good training program that she utilizes for all of us, and she utilizes it each year I go to it too.
Ben Jason, your question?
Sorry, my internet broke down for a second there.
Who's the training program that Nicole uses with anybody that is working in these roles on a yearly basis?
We get it each year.
Okay, great, thank you.
We get it each year.
Any other questions, councilors? Anyone in the audience have any question? I don't see any here. Okay, we'll move to vote, Resolution 21-119. Counselor Chin Chen?
I vote aye.
Counselor Colmore?
Aye.
Counselor Frost?
Aye.
Counselor Hall?
Aye.
Counselor Longdais?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Pete, I didn't hear you, did you respond?
Yeah, I said aye.
Oh, thank you, I didn't hear you, sorry.
That's all right.
Counselor Nichols?
Aye.
Thank you, and I vote aye as well, that will pass. All right, that brings us down to discussion items. Catherine has issued the department reports for the end of September, and also the self-achievements and accomplishments.
As well as the-
Catherine, did you-
Yes, as well as the financial reports. So all of the reports are self-explanatory, and good details from everyone. On the financial reports, I'll just briefly mention, because this is a good item to go over due to keeping up to date on our finances, and very good news. We're through 75% of the period for our expenses, and everything reconciled to show that. For the municipality, we have expended 58.4% of our budget. There are a number of items that are expended in the last month, so the statistic always goes up, but this is good. And for the municipal water and sewer expenses, we're through 54.1% of our expenses. Our revenues are very good. This has been an excellent year, because basically, all revenues have been doing okay. But the state revenue sharing has been excellent, because that was raised to where it should be. We are through 75% of the revenues period. And for the municipal revenues, we have received 74.1% contributions, which is excellent. And for the municipal revenues, we have received 74.1% collections, which is excellent. We're online, usually we're much lower. And for water sewer and municipality, municipal revenues, we are at 63.7%, and that is usually lower because the water sewer runs behind. So these are very good. Your excise tax report, you can look at, and that shows very good collections as well as the state revenue sharing. And then you do have your very large, at the end, transportation recycling center monthly report, which has all of the recycling revenues and expenditures, which for the first nine months of the period, and you consider that we pass a budget of $90,000 for recycling, our expenses, because we've had so much revenue, is basically $10,360, so that's very good for the nine months. And then the transportation, there's no amount of revenues that could take up for the extent of the cost for the end of stuff that we're spending. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You have a question?
Certainly.
A question?
Oh, Grant has a question.
The only question I have is on the rec, the notes from the recreation department there. I see the hut was broken into and trashed.
Yes, unfortunately, that has not happened for a long time. I think that's happened before.
Does the town have insurance, like on those buildings like that, little huts?
We have insurance, but not much because of their value. We inherited the snack shack. It wasn't actually the town that just ended up there for volunteer.
Well, this is enough to put an insurance claim in.
I think no.
Oh.
Yeah.
There's a couple dozen silos and vaporines and a bunch of chalk and some great fire extinguisher.
We have, we have other breaks and other similar buildings, and we are working on it. Mike Crasman working hard on that, and maybe down the road, we might be able to get restitution.
That's the idea, I thought it was the same. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, so we are going to go to reports. Anyone in the audience who'd like to report? Ask you if you are electronically, either use the raise hand signal or turn on your video so that I can acknowledge you. I'm not seeing anyone in the electronic audience. Anyone in the live audience in the council chambers like to address the council?
Oh, I have a question.
Ben Hall has a question.
Is there anything on the agenda to improve the audio and video down here in this room? It seems like year over year, we have no internet, and the audio is terrible, and the video is bad, and it's a pretty simple fix. It's pretty nice if we could upgrade that, and I don't think it'd be all that expensive. Is that on the budget, or is that anywhere?
We actually had ordered some items that are on back order for the audio for improvement.
Who advises on that? Is it Mike upstairs, or is it?
No, the staff looked up what would be good items to get. Usually that's what happens.
I would recommend seeking some, just somebody to command and just propose what would get this place up to snuff. In today's day and age with a lot of it is Zoom, it's pretty embarrassing that nobody can hear what's being said, and you can't see the councilors, and we're repeating ourselves and talking over each other. It should be a pretty simple fix.
Do you have anybody in mind?
I absolutely, yeah.
Okay, all right, we'll talk.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ben, if you can pass that information on to Catherine, she'll make use of that. I will mention also that I've been in touch with the Water Bill. Not, can't quite remember the name of her title right now, but Patty DiLotta, the City Water Bill, and she graciously offered to give me a tour of how they have it set up and how their system is working. I just, our schedules have not matched up in order to do that. They have their council meetings on the same evening we do, so I can't go see it in operations, but I plan on doing that in the next week or so, and try and make a point with her to go and see what they have set up.
I think that would be interesting. They have a lot of other meetings. You probably could go to another meeting that's taking place, like a planning board or the airport committee or what have you. So thank you for doing that.
Okay, anyone else in the audience have any comments to make to the council meeting? Not, we'll go to councilmen. Okay. All right, we'll go back to Ben again. Mike?
All right, thank you. Yes, I do. A couple comments and a statement I'd like to read. First of all, I want to thank everybody on the, in the electronic world and here in person for showing off the meeting. It's been something, as I've said many times before, that most of the time, the council is outnumbering the people in the audience, so thank you all very much. It takes a significant amount of time to let democracy do its deal, but without presence of the citizens and interested parties, it really makes it questionable on the results that we're getting, so thank you all very much. I'd like to acknowledge the passing of who I would call the eighth counselor, our official rambling man in Pittsfield, Mr. Don Hollenbeck passed last week. If anyone knows Don, he's one of the very few that was a stalwart here at these meetings. He's going to be greatly missed. So I have a brief statement I'd like to read, I'll get through it just as quick as I can. As with all town council meetings, there is a format and routine that is used for every meeting. Part of this process is a time set aside for the town manager during part C of section five reports. Included with this procedure is a submission of the meeting agenda with a listing and scripted document, including all items to be covered by the town manager. This is presented nearly word for word by the town manager at every meeting, and is a format from which is rarely deviated. During the town council meeting on Tuesday, October 5th, 2021, the town manager took five minutes or so during her time to report on the published town affairs to go off script and start to rehash the previous issues of the chief of police and the police department experience with the town manager and the labor negotiating committee while trying to establish extra benefits to attract potential new officers. The town manager had unopposed and open forum to speak what and how she wanted, and whether or not what was spoken was true. She was allowed by the mayor to continue without being challenged, questioned, or have the responsibility to prove or maintain veracity of her statements or claims. The town manager's duties and responsibilities do not allow or permit her personal opinions or feelings to temper her decisions or views. The rules, regulations, and laws of the town charter and main state law define the parameters of town manager's function. Every town council meeting is as a paid employee with a certain defined role. A few are to report on current town affairs, provide direction as requested by the town council, answer questions during the meeting, or research for the information and report at a later date, among others. In my opinion, the town manager's actions were improper, unprofessional, and inflammatory, especially given the frequent hostile nature of the previously held negotiation process. These comments had no place in that meeting at that time, or completely unrelated to the printed agenda or to current issues, and she spoke to a matter that was closed and resolved weeks previously, seemingly for an opportunity to give her unchallenged opinion on the topic. This is not taking care of current town business. The town of Pittsfield needs and deserves a town manager, a leader that communicates clearly and effectively, deserves, gives, and commands respect, and works without bias with all personnel in and of the town of Pittsfield. In my opinion, the current town manager reflects none of these characteristics and no longer has the trust or respect of the citizens of Pittsfield. It is also my opinion that for the town of Pittsfield to grow and prosper once again, shall I say, to make Pittsfield great again like it once was, that there needs to be a change in leadership, and with this, I will recommend as a citizen of Pittsfield that the town manager may submit her resignation as town manager. This matter, in my opinion, needs serious and earnest follow-through by the council as the entity charged with the responsibility of effective and efficient operation of the town of Pittsfield to ensure that this situation does not repeat. To do so, I would recommend and expect one or more of the following. Number one, censure, if an option, and that is dictated by charter and relevant state law. Number two, more frequent evaluations with measurable goals, recommend at a minimum every three months. Number three, counseling. Number four, termination granted and defined by the town charter and the main state laws with direction and guidance of the main municipal association and the town attorney or attorneys as needed to remove or replace the current town manager. I do not yearn for this process, nor do I take pride or joy in bringing forth this matter, as it was not an easy decision to make and happened only after many discussions, research, and communications with various parties. I do, however, believe this action is an absolute and overdue, and therefore I will once again challenge the council to consider what is the best for this town and to do what is right, needed, and necessary. Thank you. With that, I'll yield my time.
Councilor Hallmark, you have the floor.
Thank you. First, I'd just like to apologize for not being able to be there in person. I'm fighting off a cold and wanted to be respectful of everybody in the room, but I'll be back next time, I promise. And hopefully that will make it so I can hear what's going on better. I'd also just like to take a moment to say just how absolutely wonderful it's been to have the continued attendance of our citizens. As I said at previous meetings, we're here to serve you and to represent you, and having your voice heard and you seen, whether virtually or in person, is integral to the work we do. So thank you very much. I'd also like to just take a quick moment to acknowledge an upcoming event in our town. Outland Farm Brewery is having their Outland Oktoberfest this week, starting Thursday, the 21st through Saturday, the 23rd. I know I'm very excited. They said that they'll have a bunch of different types of beer to try on tap, and of course, they're wonderful food, so I'm excited. Hopefully, I'll see community members out there because I know I'm going. And that's it.
Thank you. Counselor Frost?
I did notice the code enforcer has had an effect because the residents in my neighborhood there, that had a building that was illegally placed, the building has been totally removed now, so. And I did see the code enforcer was actually there today, so it has made a good effect.
Yes, the residents were very happy and thanked you, as well as Bob and myself, for persisting on that very strange issue. And he is working on a variety of other items, but it is difficult with a part-time inspector to go through all the items that we have that need to be taken care of.
He was affected though, very good. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Ben Hall, Brett?
That's all, that's all I have.
Thank you. Counselor Hall?
Yeah, I just had two quick things. I was hoping to get an update from the chief on where he is with recruitment. I think maybe we've hired one person since the last time we talked. Yes, sir, we're hiring an officer who will start on this Monday, and he's going to be a great addition to the department. Has a lot of experience, he has 16 years full-time experience with the Portland Police Department.
I'm sorry, Pete, could you speak up, please?
Sure, sorry about that. We're hiring an officer from the Portland Police Department. He's been an officer there for 16 years. He grew up in this area. He'll be a great addition to the department. I met with Heather, Tim, and the town manager a week ago, this past Friday, in a conference call, negotiation meeting, and to talk about other incentives to try to attract another officer, hopefully a certified full-time officer. And I also sent the town manager a email yesterday about a possible candidate.
Excellent, excellent. And is there any updates on how the officers that were injured, they doing well?
Thanks. They're all doing well, and they're recovering from their injuries and doing really good.
Excellent, good. And that is all I have.
That it, Jason?
Yep, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Lanzetti?
I have no report this evening.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Nichols?
Yes, I'm gonna leave before 9:00 again, unfortunately. I want to, I want to wish the police officers that were injured speedy recovery. I'm glad they're on the mend, and hopefully, you know, they'll be right back to 100% if they're not due this in the future. I want to echo my thoughts on Counselor Chin Chen, Don Hollenbeck, I've known him since we were in the third grade together. Don loved this town, he was a good guy. Any question you had about this town, you go to him, and he could give you dates, times, places, information. He loved the historical society. He loved facts, out-of-facts, history. History was his big thing when he was in school. He could tell you, I could ask him a question about the Revolutionary War, and he could rattle that right off. I mean, he was a very, very, very smart man, and he loved this town a great deal, and he'll be missed, so I just wanted to throw that in there. My condolences go out to people that know him, and he'll be missed. And other than that, I do want to say it's very good to see Puritan, they've got all kinds of advertisements in the paper for first and second shift. That has picked right back up. My son works there, and they're training them on a different product line, which will increase their productivity, and those are good jobs with good benefits. So if anybody knows anybody that is looking for a job right now, I would strongly suggest you go there because they're a good company to work for. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ben. And that leaves me. Let me for a second, I have a fire down in the basement, I'm on my death. I just have a couple things. I want to thank Don Shute and Anar for coming to the meeting tonight, kind of filling us in and giving us the background on the pager versus telephone versus messaging system, and giving us a good understanding of that. I think it's important for the council to have background information on those things, and it's important to have good discussions around those things before we make those decisions. But Amanda brought up the five years versus one year, and that was agreeable to the council to do that. I think it's a good idea to do that. Also, condolences to the family and friends of Don Hollenbeck. Being relatively new to town, I did not know him as well as other people. I, my interactions with him were pretty much in the council chambers when he would come and give us updates on the historical society, and he was always very charming to listen to, and I'm sure he's going to be missed very much. I want to talk a little bit about integrity of process that we have for the town council, and that some things that Mike had brought up, particularly regarding the comments that the town manager made at the last meeting. In Mike's estimation, he pronounced them as being unprofessional, which I do not agree with, mostly because the town manager was correcting things that had been said during that meeting and previous meetings that were incorrect. And as a representative of the town, she does have a responsibility to make sure that accurate information is given out to the general public. In a week after the previous meeting before that, when I talked to her, she fielded 27 phone calls in a two-day period of time from citizens that were confused about things that had gone on around the labor negotiations committee because of different pieces of information that were put out there. And so her statement was as a direct result of that, they lose a phone calls of people that were really confused about what had happened, what the cut is was. And all of the things that she said were previously, as Mike said, he characterized it as a rehatching, it was pretty much a timeline of what had happened because there were so many questions about that. So I strongly disagree with Mike's opinion that it was unprofessional. that it was unprofessional, I, I think that what she did was appropriate to put out accurate information about the meetings, what had been, what was decided at each of those meetings, and I have serious concerns regarding remarks being made by employees as well as councilors, characterizing those actions of Labor Negotiations Committee as well as the town manager, and grossly mischaracterizing the abilities of the town manager to make decisions. I will just say that all employees have at this disposal a grievance process, and that if they have a serious grievance, there's a process outlined in their personnel handbooks, and those processes and policies are there, not only protect the employee and give them an option for redress when there's an issue with the employer, it's also there to protect the employer, and that would be the town of Pittsfield. It also provides a consistent process over time, so that every employee has the exact same options to, to pursue that. Erring complaints and grievances at a public meeting regarding a department head, regardless of who that department head is, is not only a violation of the personnel policies in not going through that grievance process, but it's also, in my estimation, unethical, it breaks the chain of command of the town's operations, and it does not reflect well on the town. If there are facts that are presented in the meeting or in remarks, I believe the town manager has every right and a responsibility to correct those with the correct information, whether it be dollar figures, or dates, or events that had happened, that is part of her job as well, and it's very disturbing to have a counselor take that and turn it around into something that is not. In addition to that, I would also say that the councilors are bound by their oath that they take at the beginning of the time that they are sworn in, and they swear to uphold the rules and regulations of the, of the town as well, and, and part of that is being respectful to each other, it's being respectful to the people that attend our council meetings, as well as all of the employees within the town. So it's very disturbing to have a counselor openly call for the resignation of an employee, no matter who that employee is, and basically conduct an open evaluation of that employee's performance in an open meeting, it's entirely inappropriate, in my opinion, I know you have a different opinion, Mike, but I don't find it very appropriate at all for that to be done, there is a process in place for evaluating the town manager, it was revamped last year, this is during the time that you've not been on the council, so it is different from the last time, and we will be going through that process in the next two months, and you will be able to experience how that process has changed and has been developed, and I hope that through that process, you will gain a better understanding of how the evaluation process is done currently, and how we will be doing it going forward. At this point, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn meeting.
I move we adjourn. I'll second.
Is that Tim?
Yeah.
That's Tim, yes.
And I'll second.
Thank you. Second, is that Pete?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
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 We've got to do the roll, sorry, we've got to do the roll. Councilor Chin Chen?
I vote aye.
Councilor Hallmore?
Aye.
Councilor Frost?
Aye.
Councilor Hall?
Aye.
Councilor Lloyd Vines?
Aye.
Councilor Nichols?
Aye.
Aye, aye, it's me that's adjourned.
I think that whole Chris Barry, that's our old member, so I'll just show up here, and if she shows up, we'll hang over there.
Yeah, come on.
Have a good evening. Yeah, I'll have her, I'm all set, I'll show up here, and if she shows up, we'll take care of that, okay?